Okay. Are we good?
Good.
Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to another round with the Budget Advisory Board. Yes.
This isn't a battle.
Yeah, no, it's not a battle. It's a pod to do. Anyway, this is June 21st, Tuesday, 2022, 11:30 a.m., the Budget Advisory Board Workshop with the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale. We welcome all of you who are here today, those who are here from the board, as well as from the members of the public and staff. Mr. Donaldson, would you like to call the role of your board?
Sure. Vice Chair Lowe, Ross Kamada, not here, Michael Marshall, Bill Brown, Prabhu Lin Patel, Kristian Maslalary, and Chair Donaldson, here. So we have two out of our seven.
So there's no quorum with--
No quorum, but it is a workshop. It's not a required BAB meeting.
Okay. Well, they apparently think they're in good hands by you and Mr. Lowe's representation, so it's difficult having these workshops in the daytime. I understand. People work, and it's not easy to get away. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the role of the City Commission?
Commissioner Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie.
About present.
Vice Mayor Sorenson.
Here.
Mayor Trent House.
Here. And so we have a quorum in the City Commission. So, Mr. Donaldson, would you like to begin Business One?
Sure. I'm not sure which Business One versus Two versus Three, but we're going to sort of just merge it--
Okay.
--through as a workshop.
Business One is with regard to the fiscal year 2023 general fund preliminary budget.
Yes. So today, my goal is to give you a high level versus an in-the-weeds level, to share with you all of the in-the-weeds highlights that the rest of the team and I met with each of the department heads and went through a lot of additional analysis. And we're very pleased that a lot of the initiatives that we knew that would be important to you for your initiatives that you had put in your January goal-setting are part of this new preliminary 2023 budget. So today, I wanted to share with you, first off, that there's two items that we needed to have you be aware of and to decide on before you have to give the county your trim notices. And so with that, BAB unanimously voted at our last meeting last week that to hold the ad valorem millage rate at .041193 for a record 16 years, we feel that unanimously that we are able, with the new additional revenues from the $5.1 billion increase in tax--
Five point six billion.
Five point six billion dollar additional tax base for the city at 11.9%. That additional $20 million, along with some additional revenues, we can enhance the services offered to our city and tackle part of the infrastructure, which is not necessarily pipes infrastructure, but infrastructure that is back house, that is in general funds. So I'm going to highlight some of those as we go through. But that was the one big thing today, is that we feel comfortable that the current budget allows us to serve our residents of the city with a flat ad valorem tax rate. We then voted in regards to the full recovery for fire assessment fee, which is the second item that is on the trim notice, and that would be going from $311 to $321. It's been three years since we went to the 311, and this would last us for the next three years when we do the analysis. So by majority vote, we advise that you adapt that full recovery, and that number is in the proposed budget that the city manager has shared with you. So are there any questions on those two items that were given you a recommendation prior to the trim notice?
I just have a question.
Sure.
With regard to the fire assessment fee, the fire assessment fee is based on a theory that the amount of money that's collected in the fire assessment fee has to do with-- Hi, Commissioner. --has to do with the actual cost for fire suppression.
Yes.
And I was wondering, did your board at any time consider not raising the fire assessment fee, but somehow incorporating any increased costs on fire suppression into the general fund? The general, you know, the 20-plus million dollars that we're getting, were we able to absorb that extra cost in the additional amount of money we'll be getting?
Well, that additional $10 is only going to raise revenues by about 1.3 million.
Right.
The expenditures for the EMS fire department is going up in excess of that. So we are using a large-- There is a-- It is not-- The fire-- If we did a flat fire assessment fee, that only accounts for about 20% to 25% of the increase in the departmental expenses. So by state, we can only collect based upon the actual fire, and I'm not the expert on it, but I know enough of it, that it was very detailed in what the expectations and what we can and can't do to expense to that. So, and you know that the majority of our expenses are more for EMS services versus fire suppression services. And there's a couple of programs that the chief brought forward that we were very excited about in addition to their payroll for this next year that I'll get into when we get to it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
As I said before, the tax value from the county appraisers came in at almost 12%, and that is tax value. So when you think about that, how significant it must have been, because there's-- How many of you are homesteaded? So your tax value, even though your market value-- We're not talking about market value. Some properties, like my own, the market value went up 35%, but there is a save a home for people at 3%. Our average is now coming down to 12, so that's only a 3. The non-homesteaded properties, so all of our snowbirds, vacation rentals, et cetera, are capped at 10%, and yet we still came in at a record high 12%. So that is also from the $1.9 billion of new construction that was added to the role, but also the amount of exchanges. As you all know, how many properties changed hands? So I know in my particular neighborhood--
See the smile on your face as a Realtor?
It was a good year. I know in my particular neighborhood, we had a record high of almost 20% of our homes switched.
20%?
20%. It was a very, very big year for people at the beach and at new record highs. So those homesteads that had maybe been paying only 9,000 or 12,000, like my neighbor was 12,000 last year, I just looked, because that went away. The new owners, their new property taxes are 55,000. So those kind of increases in the net tax value is how we ended up at 12%. Because I know I've had other people say, "Well, if there's a cap at 10% and 3%, how could we have come in at 12%?" It's because so many homes exchanged hands that those old homesteads went away, and now we have that as part of that. So that is allowing us a $20 million increase over last year in the general fund, which is significant.
And people should understand, who are listening, that the increase in taxes, we only get about 20% of that increase, and the rest of it goes to the county, the school board, and other municipal services. If everyone looks at their tax bill, City of Fort Lauderdale only gets a small portion of that. The rest of it goes to other agencies.
And most tax bills in the City of Fort Lauderdale, it's about 19% comes to the City of Fort Lauderdale. So the largest is the county and then school board, and also a significant portion is Broward Health.
Right.
Brian, quick question. I know you said about, you said 20% of the homes in your particular neighborhood turned over last year. Do you have any idea what percentage may be vacation rentals?
Out of the 90%, we're now a 42% vacation rental neighborhood.
That's horrible.
So because--
Sorry, I know you own one, but I'm just philosophically very against them, but yes.
And it's-- And because, you know, when you look at-- You know, we're tearing down the neighborhood at 1, 2 to 3 million. And so when you look at the average tax bill of any of the homes that have flipped, they're talking 55,000, 60,000 a year. And if they're only there eight to 12 weeks a year, they're renting them out when, on the times that they don't want to be there. So that's just the reality of the numbers, and our insurance rates have-- You can't imagine being that close of age.
So it's an issue that you all have to watch over the couple of years. Our city is going to turn into a vacation rental city because people can't afford to buy homes here. I know my aunt and uncle sold their home in your neighborhood. It's going to be a vacation rental.
Yeah, and that was one of the examples. They had an old hometown, you know, they were being taxed about 600,000, and they sold for 2.5 million. So, you know, it was a big change. We also received from our partnership with Alpine Now and our utility taxes, that's a significant increase of 4.6 million over last year in the general fund. And another revenue stream was the American Rescue Plan, which was $3.9 million. So as a cumulative on those, this is allowing us to make some significant changes and enhancements to the general fund this year. Part of our expenditures to last year is without enhancements. This is just based upon taking things status quo, but based upon what we're estimating and budgeting toward our contractual obligations, which haven't been finalized, but we have put into the budget $10.1 million for increases in personnel expenses, an increase in CIP funding of 8.3 million, CRA additional funding of 2.1 million, our fleet replacement of 1.1 million, and our information technology of 1.1 million. When we look at what those baseline numbers were and then the additional revenue that we're going to have, BAB was able to look and partner with the city manager and the budget team and all the department heads in looking at strategic enhancements of over $12 million to last year because of this record increase. So I just want to give some highlight levels of the departments that BAB really focused on. Our number one concern was the police department. And so BAB really went into, you know, knowing from what we heard from all of you in our preliminary that public safety was very high on your list, we really felt that this was the time to add some additional personnel to the police department. So in this budget that the city manager has proposed, there are an addition of 17 new sworn officers. There are three additional detention officers. And one thing that we really, BAB, supported after listening to the conversation with the chief is adding an additional clinical psychologist. The current psychologist has been very effective, and the servicemen and women that work in the police department are starting to utilize this, more so than they have in the past. And they felt that there was demand, and BAB really felt that that was something that should be supported. So the total dollars that are into that for those 21 individuals is $3.1 million in additional payroll for next year in this budget. Also, to support--
See, are we-- So of the stated number of sworn officers in our police department, in 2022, have all those positions been filled?
No, they haven't.
So what's the deficit? What's the-- Not the deficit, the delta, I guess is the phrase--
I've--
--between sworn officers, the full complement and the actual number of sworn officers? Do we have a number on that? Chief? I can't hear you, and no one else can hear you. Could you please come up to the podium?
We currently have 46. I think there's 46 open currently, if I'm correct.
Good afternoon. The question-- Can you hear me? Is that on?
Yes.
Is the question, the number of vacancies we have for sworn police officers?
Yes.
We're down to about two now.
Just two?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So it would be 17 in addition to the two.
Yes, but that's a moving target on a regular basis. So each month, we get an update, and at some point--
Yeah, there's attrition.
--it went into the 20 and 40--
I get that.
--because of the amount of attrition. One of the things that, when we were sharing about the recruitment, they have had a much more success this year, and there were some numbers in HR in additional funding for out-of-state recruitment and marketing. So I think that the partnership between human resources and the chief and his team have had--
Are we getting a lot of officers from Chicago?
I believe the number that they shared with us at one of the meetings was that they-- Of the 29 that have been hired, 26 had had experience in other municipalities.
Okay.
And the majority of those were from out of state.
Thank you.
So also, to make sure that we continue to support our men and women in law enforcement, we wanted to make sure that we continued to support their requests for additional equipment. So in this budget, there are replacements in an ongoing next four years, a bulletproof vest in this budget, $275,000 a year, a one-time expense of radio-controlled robot, which is $300,000. There was quite a bit of discussion about nighttime vision goggles. It's $490,000. That's 49 goggles. They're $10,000 a goggle, and they are fitted per person. And yes, we had a lot of discussion on that.
Those bifocals?
They work at night, and if you-- They work at night and if you were part-
Dollars?
$10,000 each, yes. We had the same sticker shock and I'm just going to give you some high level because you don't need to get into weeds we did. We had a lot of discussion and after understanding it and, and understanding what our SWAT teams do in the evenings, et cetera, if we don't have these kind of goggles in everyone, then they have to turn on additional lights, which then puts them at a disadvantage when they're going up against somebody that may want to do harm to them.
Okay.
So there were different things that we just felt that were really important. So if you look at some of these line items, also high resolution cameras, about $300,000, replacing two of our police marine boats at 102,000 and then a capital fleet department fund, which is not part of the general fund, but it does support our, our police officers, replacing 22 Harley-Davidson motorcycles at 402,000. So we were 22. And we then challenged, what is that in purchasing versus leasing? And we had a whole analysis and backup of, we currently are leasing, but based upon residual values, et cetera, it actually made more fiscal sense this time to, to purchase them versus the other. So your, your team at BAB do get into the nitty gritty and I'm just sharing with you that that was what the results was. So we support that. The next department that we really wanted to make sure that we support was the fire and EMS team. As you remember, we added 16 additional people, our personnel. Some of those are being trained now and have just come out of academy and we will be annualizing. So the 2022 budget did not have the full amount of what that would be on an annual basis because we knew that they would be going into academy and more in April. So that will continue to go forward into the 23, which would be about a $1.6 million increase over 22. The other new item for the fire EMS is to then put into the budget for 23, a part-year plan for the new station 88, which is, used to be called the EMS substation south. So that will have a station 88. So we have put into the budget $960,000. That will be a three-person staff and so that would be 14 FTEs on an annualized basis, but we're looking at that as a startup toward the end of fiscal 23. So then the 2024 for that, when looking at, you know, we're only putting in half of a year here, but that would then go into 1.8 million into the 2024. There was a lot of discussion about the number of calls that we have, that each of the station houses get in from the 911 system. And it was mind-blowing, I guess is a better word, of, of how many on some of these get on an, on an actual day, you know? And so like on a Tuesday morning, the other day when I was sitting in a meeting with the, with the city manager and I said, okay, can you pull up and tell me how many EMS calls? On a Tuesday morning in this city at nine o'clock, there were 29 that were out and about on a Tuesday morning. There weren't accidents, they were just mainly, you know, a lot of just 911 calls. So there, there was a new initiative that the chief brought forward that we really got excited about and spent a lot of time on and you'll see it in your details and it's adding two additional people as a new initiative and new program called the Mobile Integrated Health Program. And what this is, it is really, and they would be better to speak on it, but to give you a, a nutshell, in a layman's terms, it is really taking this team and really focusing on our highest usage of the system. We have, for example, one person that had called 911 22 times in little over 30 days. Of the top 50 911 callers in the first three months this year, they accounted for over 400 calls. So if you're a regular 911 caller because you're having an issue or you have a pain or you have something, that takes away that entire state, possibly that entire station or that team when somebody that is having a cardiac arrest or there is a real fire or an accident, they're, they're now at a different location. So this is really going to be helping to work with these individuals and help them to get additional services and working with different programming to help try to not utilize the 911 calls and have to send out a latter team and an EMS if they can't get back up or, or something. So this was something that we really thought was proactive. It started cutting edge and I'm sure the chief could share with more with you if he had any additional questions, but we thought we need to really start as a community, start to be more preventative and give the team this startup and to try to see how they can eliminate some of these unnecessary 911 and rushing out as we do.
All right. So with regard to that department, I had a previous conversation with you and at some point, will you be able to tell the commission, what is the status of those additional hires which we funded in the last 2022 budget? Were they filled? And how many calls for service did we receive in 2020 and 2021 and the year-to-date 2022? Because my understanding was that those additional hires were meant to cover overtime. So we'd like to know what were the overtime hours pre-COVID, during COVID and post-COVID to determine whether or not the additional hires had any impact on overtime? Did we, did we reduce overtime during those times? Did we not? Did we have, were those actual hires hired during the fiscal year or are we still waiting to hire them? My understanding is we're still, we haven't really hired the full complement of additional hires, so it may not have had any impact on reducing overtime. So at some point, if you can give a presentation on that, that would be helpful.
Okay. I know that we have analyzed part of that and originally their requests, when you looked at the package that they had requested that we had not supported initially before it went to the dais was to help with based upon vacation times and coverage. So it wasn't like none of our stations were fully staffed. This was an additional FT complement to help fill for vacation empty and things. The initial numbers that I was shared, the overtime has not been-
Well, first of all, we're all the, we're all the hires-
So can we ask the chief to come up? Because you're asking me questions and I may not have the full knowledge.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, hi, chief.
Good afternoon. So I think maybe what's a bit confusing is, is that we have hired the people that we were authorized to hire, but, and they are going to be graduating on Friday, but as the program evolves, we lose a couple. There's some attrition. So we lost a couple through attrition, but the, I think the big challenge is, is that the people leaving the organization either through, because they're part of the drop program or they just are, you know, want to retire, is, is keeping pace with the number that we're hiring. So our net gain sometimes is zero.
So, but have, if you're saying they're just graduating now, okay, so we're many months into the fiscal year, they really haven't had any impact then on the, on the intention that we had of, of funding those new, those new positions, right?
That, that's correct. So by the time that, you know, we, it usually takes about six months to advertise, take applications, do the interviews, do the testing and the interviews, establishing a list and then doing the background investigations and all the things that we do before we hire someone. And then there's 12 weeks of training and orientation prior to and being put into an operations position. So the, these individuals are just finishing. In fact, I just talked to the chief of training a few minutes ago and they are really busy right up until the day of graduation. So they're graduating Friday evening and they will start working in operations, filling up some vacant slots. But it's, you know, like I said, it's, it's a constant keeping up with the number of people that are leaving the organization and the ones that we're trying to hire to fill either the vacancies or, you know, the new positions.
All right. So if we're, if the, if the six, there were 16 if I remember correctly. So if we hired 16, if we funded for 16 more positions and, and those, those folks that are now graduating are just filling in the vacancies, we really aren't spending the money because they're filling in for people that are already funded in the, in the, without the six, you just know what I'm saying?
I do.
If we're netting zero, just, just for discussion's sake, that we still need to hire 16 more.
I'll let Paul.
No, just, first of all, I want to make sure to get it through. April 1st.
Right, yes, yeah.
We didn't budget for the full year. We knew when in October that they would have to-
We didn't even need to budget for that because what did you say?
But mayor, they were funded for an April 1st start date. They weren't a full year of funding.
Right.
So we brought them on, I think it was April 18th. So we were almost right on target, you know, for the April 1st start date. And so, you know, we are moving them through, but again, remember they weren't funded until April 1st. They were only funded-
Okay, then that's fine. But at the same time, if they're just, if they're just taking the place of people that have left the department-
Yeah, okay.
If they're just taking the place of people that have left the department and those people, those, those positions were already funded, we never really would tap into the new funding for the additional folks, the additional hires, because they're just taking the place of people that have left.
But when we, when we hire, then when we bring on the new hires and they're in training, we're paying them. So it's-
You're paying them out of the, the people that have left budget, not the additional money.
I'm going to let Paul-
That's fine.
-add to you.
I mean, am I thinking, is this, am I, am I, am I thinking correctly or incorrect? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I think it, it's more complicated than what that is because the fact that, unfortunately, but it is. The, when you look at the overtime, the overtime in first quarter, which our first quarter starts in October. So if I look at the overtime in October, this year overtime was 550,000 versus last year's 127 for the same month. If I look at then November-
Just per month?
For one month.
Okay.
And that was a record high. And in 2020 overtime in October, which was during COVID, was only 83,000 and then 127,000 last year over the overtime budget. So the, so right now, and then we were, we were only 172,000 over in November and then no, December was 340,000 of overtime. So those were overtimes before starting to the other. So the department has had a lot of overtime and it's been attributed in the past to vacations, to family leave, to additional shifts, COVID, because if somebody-
I fully get, I fully get.
Et cetera. So I hear where you're going at, but yes, they need, they need to hire additional people to get up to the number.
They, they, I understand all that, but the money that we allocated that was to take effect in April are for people that we really didn't hire yet because they're just, the new, the new graduates are replacing-
Mayor, but they don't, they don't, it's not, they don't replace the same people at the same time. In other words, you've had attrition, they started paying the new graduates when they all started, which was what?
April 18th.
April 18th. So my guess is from April 18th to June 21st, you've had various attrition that's happened that didn't line up with all happening on April 18th.
Get that.
So there are times where we're paying both the new grad, the new hires as well as the people who left or are leaving or left in that beginning of June or beginning of May. So I think there is some overlap that, that happens there where you're paying both.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And then also sometimes individuals that are leaving the organization have accumulated overtime, not overtime, I'm sorry, vacation.
Vacation.
And they vacation out. So even though they're not riding in an operations position, they're still receiving their pay because they're on vacation.
Oh, and I, okay, I understand that, but somewhere there's, somewhere in between is a calculation between replacing the people that are leaving because of, of, of their, they're retiring or they're going to another department or whatever their reason is, that the new hires are replacing. And, and those people that have left, their positions have been funded under the regular budget. And if the new hires are being used to replace those positions, then the extra money that we have allocated for the new hires seems to be surplus because we're not using that money because they're actually being paid under, under the salary arrangements under the people that have left. And to spend another half a million dollars a month in overtime just seems, there's something out of whack here.
Let me, let me ask a better question for, for you. Can you share with us what the attrition, what was your strategy on, on constantly filling positions that you anticipate based upon attrition or drop? So you have academies, I mean, in all the years that you didn't have these additional 16, you do hire people throughout the year. So if you could share with us some of that, that might answer your question, but I think that between the two, yes, we should have had the 16 plus whatever we were doing for the regular attrition.
Optimally, that would be what we want.
So share with that.
Well, we would love to be able to say that of the people that have left, I think out of the 12 that have left in this past, you know, fiscal year currently, that only one or maybe two were in the drop plan and are actually had to leave because of the drop. Some have left like three, four years ahead of their drop date. So we can't really account for or project other than like Paul will take an average of over the last three years, how many people have left.
But those, those 12 that have left, they were funded positions?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm going to let Paul respond to the-
Okay, Paul, come on.
The numbers thing.
Okay, okay.
I can explain to the programming and, and the strategies that we use.
Okay.
Good morning. Paul of Vandenberg with Fire. There's a couple of things that occurred this year that have been coming out over the last couple of years. We started the year from a financial standpoint, based on our payroll shift schedule for overtime on September 5th. So we had about three weeks going into it. We had our new hire class. When we went in, we were, by the time we were done with the new hire class, by late November, we were fully staffed. But we started to go through attrition immediately and from November on, right up and through June, we've had 14 positions that have been vacated that were funded initially.
Okay.
So the, I think one of the issues that we need to be very clear about is that it's not a one-to-one ratio between whatever salary savings you might have from a vacated position and what the cost of overtime is. That's not a one-to-one.
Oh, but there's not a one-to-one correlation between the people that have left and the new hires. The people that have left are going to be paid higher than the new hires.
Yes.
So there's going to be a differential there.
There is a, there is an offset. I'm not saying that there isn't an offset, but the offset isn't one-to-one, you know? So you've had this accumulation and then we also had an issue specifically through November through the end of January where we had a very high COVID impact. When you're on a minimum staffing model like we are, that's a one-to-one. If somebody's out, you need to fill that position.
What percent of the, what percent of the agency of the department had been vaccinated? Do we know?
I don't know that, but we can probably find out. I think the number is high, but-
Was it less or more than 50?
They can't ask that question.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry? I, I didn't hear.
I don't believe they can ask that question.
Can't ask that question. Okay.
So we, we had, so we had an issue where we've got attrition going on and it's going to continue to go on, on an unscheduled basis. When I say unscheduled, a non-drop basis. When you have a drop basis, you know when someone's final day is and you somewhat can gauge going on, but we've had a four-year trend where we've got people leaving outside of that schedule. So when I, I think the point that we need to make sure that, when you want to locate a qualitative analysis on it, we really need to look starting in October of next year because when, then we're going to have a class that's finishing now. We've got another class starting, I believe in early October.
Yes.
So about 12 weeks out of that, then as long as we don't have any significant attrition between now and November, you're going to now be able to see the results of providing those additional staffing that you did in '22 and what the impact is on overtime going forward.
Well, but the thing is, we obviously keep hiring because through people leaving the agency, leaving the department, we have to keep hiring people to fill those vacancies, right?
Yes.
And that's what you've been doing. So by funding and fund, so by making the decision to hire 16 more people, we funded 16 new positions as of, as of April of this year, but did we really need to fund all 16 positions if they were in fact taking over? we really need to fund all 16 positions if they were in fact taking over the place of people that had left up to 14 positions?
Well, but when those decisions were made, I mean, yes, we always need because our hiring, we cannot keep up with the attrition right now. So, you know, in the modeling standpoint, the, the whole idea of the 16 new firefighters was based on a staffing factor. What is the staffing factor at full deployment with, you know, not just, not just appropriated positions, but filled positions? So if you have 100% filled positions, the staffing factor will decrease and almost minimize operational minimum staffing overtime.
Okay, so that's the optimum level?
Yes.
If we had, if we had those additional 16 filled?
Yes.
We don't have them yet. Even with the new graduating class, we're still in a deficit situation, correct?
Yes, we'll be, I, I believe that we'll have 28 people as of right now in our new hire class in October. Is that correct?
Okay.
So at that point, as long as we don't have any other significant attrition between now and November, when that class will be at a full complement, and then we'll actually be able to track how the staffing factor is, we can look at year over year, month over month, and it will be realistic.
Okay.
And it will be something that we can present to you and say, here's the impact of what happens when we're at full staffing.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to supporting them with the additional people, we were also looking at some additional equipment requirements. So were we, in this current budget?
Brian, I had, I had a question about the item you were speaking about right before we talked about this.
Okay.
You mentioned about the mobile health teams.
Yes.
I would like to know if we have researched the mobile health teams that like the emergency room department also utilizes to avoid people from overusing the health department's emergency rooms. I know Broward Health has some sort of program. I also know the YMCA has a program because they're called, I believe, community health workers where they go into the community and they have a team that they mobilize. So I want to make sure we're not duplicating services when we, when we suggest a program like that. Have we really researched any mobile health teams that are already in place in our city?
Yeah. So Commissioner, we have just recently had a, sort of a retreat and we had all of our hospital systems engaged in almost, there were probably, probably 100 people in the room that we talked about mobile integrated healthcare and how we coordinate and how we work together. So we are not duplicating what is happening like with, like you said, with the emergency room and emergency departments and with sometimes, you know, the healthcare systems. So we.
Okay, good. So it's a coordinated.
We are primarily addressing those that are calling 911 for some reason or another and, and trying to reduce the number of times. And in some cases, it's a combination of that they, they need healthcare and, or they need attention. And sometimes they do have an emergency, but it's not the kind that if we can avoid transporting to the hospital, but we can treat them at home, then, you know, we're also reducing the number of times they're going to call 911 because they don't feel well.
Good. So this will help the coordinated team that you were meeting with? It's just an additional piece of the puzzle that's needed?
That's correct. So, and it's just the very beginning of a mobile integrated healthcare program.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Commissioner, we did ask those similar type of questions and because we were like, okay, what was this, et cetera. And some of the team members had some experience with other cities, et cetera. But we thought that when we heard that the significant number of calls that are going out that are, we have, I believe the number was over 30% of the time that we send in EMS, they refuse treatment or going to anywhere. So when you have that significant number, then it's really just, they need to see someone, but they don't have enough of emergency to go to a hospital. You know, we're sending out also a fire truck and everyone else with that. How do we, how do we get our, our, our team members that are being burned out from all of these calls? How do we reduce these number of calls so that they're, they're, they're not as fatigued when a call that is important comes through? So that was the thought behind it.
Thank you.
And it's just the start of a program, but we thought it should be explored because it is a crisis, a number of calls that we're getting that are, are unnecessary. And then also centralized data storage, leasing space for the lifeguards, the current lifeguards. It's, we have $200,000 in budget to give them a permanent home until their home can be put in place in the new revised aquatic center. So they're currently without a home because of the fact that we're going to be replacing Station 13. So that's part of it. And then is part of the program of replacing three of the lifeguard towers, and that's 260,000. So.
Total, all three at 260,000?
Yes. They're running about 80 to 90,000 dollars apiece is what I was told. And we have a program that is looking at them and how to replace them at different timelines going along in the future. So in keeping track of those. The other big department that we felt as if in past years, because it was more of a strategic reduction or a strategic year where we didn't have the kind of funding that we have from the significant increase in tax value this year, was our IT, our information technology department. And in this new proposal, we have new five-year information technology upgrades, and I'm just going to highlight a few of them. But this is our infrastructure that is behind the scenes. So you have all done a significant, great job at making sure that you have challenged through bonds and improvements, the water sewer, also the stormwater, et cetera. But there was, we felt, significant delays or, or lack of in our storage systems and our, our laptops, our, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just going to highlight a few. So 1.1 million dollars will be for outsourcing for cybersecurity and IT information, et cetera. We didn't feel as if it was important to add additional FTEs, that there are experts out there that would be better so to sign and have these additional people signed up and contract to help us make sure that this city and their systems and, and, and calls, et cetera, are not subject to a cyber attack. Also, our IT computer manage, maintenance of 493,000 over last year. Citywide information modernization, 1.3 million. So the central service fund has increased over $3 million in this budget and then an ongoing 1.2. Citywide services, we felt that from listening to other citizens out there, and I know that you get them in, as our team participates in your commission touch bases with your constituents, pre-agenda meetings, et cetera, we kept hearing some significant things that kept coming up. And one of them was the fact that we need after-hours code officers. So in this budget, there is a proposal to add four FTEs to the development services strictly for after-hours code enforcement. That's $530,000. As a president of a neighborhood that is significantly high in vacation rentals, it's very frustrating at 11:30 midnight, or if you're off of Las Olas and you have sound complaints at midnight and there's no one from code, police can't give you code enforcement tickets or violations. So we think that this will be a significant improvement for all of you and your, and your constituents. And so we were very excited to support that initiative.
Brian, just on that, if I could, that's really needed, especially in my district, I'm sure for yours as well.
Paul District.
Huge gap. Officers actually can cite through an email report, just FYI. So that, that is an option and depending what the situation is.
That's more commercial than it is for violations of, of vacation rental ordinance. So is from what I've.
Yeah, I think.
Been affected. So I think there's, there's an, whether or not it's a business versus a residential complaint.
There's some residential stuff they can do.
But it's significant that we need this, these four positions.
I think that'd be great. I was really happy.
So, so these were sort of our, our, our touch points that we really felt that, and the city manager was able to, to put, get this into the budget. Also additional staffing, we felt that there was been a request in talking to Parks and Rec about their challenges of their part-time staff. So in this budget, there is a line item to increase our salaries for part-time in Parks and Rec and start being able to do, get a better quality of outcome out of that, and that's 374. Also, three additional FTEs for Parks and Recs to expand and enhance our medians and the maintenance of our medians. And that's about 1.4 million dollars between the contracts and the additional staff. So these additional, one FTE for the aquatic center. Now that the aquatic center is starting to open, it felt that we needed to have an additional person, and that's 186,000. So unlike past, the past four years when I've sat here and talked to you in regards to where the new budget was, it was pretty much a flat FTE. There are, for the first time in four years, additional FTEs. And taking it beyond just public safety and going into some of these departments that haven't really had any type of significant FTEs by, but zeroing these FTEs into the initiatives which were your priorities at your January setting. So those were that. And then also for Cistrunk Boulevard Railroad Crossing, that would be a million dollars in the budget. We also heard about the cemetery fund and how significantly understaffed they were. And now that the city has been taking over that, and there's four additional FTEs in that, and that will be, not be funded through general fund, but it's through the cemetery fund. But I thought it was significant enough to mention because it does go to servicing our residents of the city, whether or not it's general fund or not. And so we really looked at and we appreciate the Budget Office and the city manager and listening to our bullet points of where we felt priorities were that really zeroed in on helping to additional people or increasing the salaries for part-timers, et cetera, so that we can as citizens see more improvements of the things that were tied through. So we can accomplish this in this budget, and that is why we felt that we didn't need an additional ad valorem increase. And with that, I'm going to have a caveat, though. There is the general employees, that additional requests for the COLA, which would be 13 million dollars, is not in this budget. So if you as a group felt that that was a significant, then we couldn't do any of these other things.
What is, what is the 13 million dollars represent?
That was, represent the cost of what that program would be if we funded it all in one year, which is what we would need if we didn't have a unanimous vote to do the COLA over payments over years.
So that's a, that represents one year of an increase or multiple years? How, what does that actually represent?
It is the unfunded liability. So we would have to put in 13 million dollars into this next year.
Every year?
No, the one time.
Just one time?
And then it would be a, as the fund balances go up and down over time, then the amount of the annual contribution by the city would then change. And we know that this year, the, the markets are not performing as well as they have the last five years. So where I'm anticipating next year, the, the number that we will be contributing in '24 and '25 will be higher. But if we, for this one item, so we asked the city manager to put them into our line items of the requests, and it, it was, my understanding from sitting in the audience at, when that was presented, that you didn't have unanimous to prorate that over time. So that would be a 13 million. And there is no way in this budget with our priorities of police, fire, there's additional FTEs in these other departments that we could also do this 13 because there was only about 12 million dollars to do enhancements. So I'm just stating to you, this would be the time, if you felt that you needed to fund that, that 13 million, then we have to add, increase the ad valorem and tell the taxpayers it's to fund that program. Because with a flat ad valorem, we can't do the, the exciting things I just outlined and do that. You can't, it just doesn't balance. And then we have to have a balanced budget.
Understood. But Mayor, I did want to, and Laura, maybe we can have this, we don't have to have this discussion today, but going forward, because we have a few months, if I remember correctly, there were those other options that you mentioned. It doesn't need to be 13 million all in one year. There were, there were several options that were presented to us, but maybe we, if we could take a look at that moving forward, because I, I, I actually do support after decades of no COLA for those employees, I do support something like that. But I just, not at 13 million for this year, but I do remember there were much.
It was like a graduated.
Yeah, the, the options were much different than just 13 million, one shot.
So Commissioner Susan Grant's probably the better one to speak about that. But my understanding is that without a unanimous vote, we would have to put into place the full amount, which is 13 million. But that's spread over multiple funds. So the general fund portion is around a half of that. But Susan's coming up, so she would be able to share.
So that was what my premise was. If there was not a unanimous.
Right.
Then the various funds this year needs to come up with the full 13 million, which general fund is about 6.9.
Right.
And if that was to take place, we do need an ad valorem increase. So that's the only reason why I mention it today, because you're deciding whether or not the ad valorem increase needs to come in or not. And all of this other things, which I didn't get into minutia, those are the things like charitable donations currently are in this budget at 2 million, but that's subject to all the change. Everything that, when we get into the details and you review that, I was trying to keep it at high level. So I just wanted to give you that heads up, that this would be the time to have sort of that discussion as to whether or not you have a unanimous or not, because there aren't the other options available if you're not unanimous. And if so, then we have to think about the ad valorem if that is your desire. And I didn't want you to hear later, well, why didn't we know that before the July? So that's why I brought it up.
So let's see if I understand you correctly.
Yes.
If we decide to contribute to, to the COLA, all right, and so the commission needs to make that decision, number one. Number two, if it doesn't want to do it all in one year, then it has to unanimously agree not to do it all in one year. Otherwise, if we decide to do the COLA and it's not unanimous, then we have to do it all in one year.
Yes.
That's.
And Susan will.
Is that my understanding?
Back me up on that.
Yeah, and.
It sounds a little convoluted.
Susan Grant, Finance Director. And you had asked about the options. There were three that were presented. The two that would require unanimous vote are either to amortize it over five years, and I think that was approximately 2.7 million dollars a year over that five-year period, or to do it over seven years, and that was maybe 2.2 million over a seven-year period. The shorter period would be preferable and, and a best practice. The alternative of 13 million is without a unanimous vote, it all has to be funded in a single year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think there were other items that I noticed in there, because we've had a couple of discussions, but we've never really decided one way or the other. But I did notice throughout this preliminary budget, paid parental leave. And we've never really, we've had a couple of preliminary discussions about that. And I did see how that would play out for the various funds. But that's something I think as a commission, we have to discuss too and figure that out once and for all as well. Thanks.
And that wasn't as, as much of a number. So I thought that, to, to your commissioner, I thought that that was some of the things that we could possibly, that could be fleshed out over the next couple of months.
Okay.
My job today was to really help you focus on those key two things that are in the TRIM notice, whether or not our ad valorem is flat and the fire fee. So I'm bringing this up because it is a big what-if. And I know that there were some of you that were very supportive of the COLA. But as it was explained to me, if it wasn't unanimous on COLA, then we were facing a 13 million. And I don't feel, as your, your Bab Chair, that we could recommend a flat ad valorem if you're going to do the COLA.
Understood.
Because we can't have both.
I understand 100%.
And that was my job to, to educate you.
When do we have to make that decision? When do we have to make that decision?
You are going to be voting that in.
July.
July.
July is when we set the millage rate.
Your next meeting.
July of 2022?
No, yeah. That's when we set the maximum millage rate.
That's when you set the max.
Right. So the, the discussion today is really focused around those two things, the maximum millage rate and the fire assessment fee. Those are the two things you'll be voting on in July. And then you'll have budget hearings in September ultimately culminating in the adoption of a budget.
So Chris, you just want to hear today how we feel about TRIM and fire assessment?
That's, that's really the focus of.
General sense.
Yes, that's the first thing that's going to come in front of you. But it's okay to talk about the budget in some detail so that you feel comfortable giving direction on both of those things.
Right. And I think what Brian is saying is if we end up needing to spend 13 million dollars, it's going to impact their recommendation and might impact the TRIM, it might impact the. going to impact their recommendation and might impact the trim, it might impact the millage rate. So, all right, just a quick, just a quick thing, do we have a consensus here what we want to do with the COLA? Do we want to do COLA? Do we not want to do COLA? If we do want to do COLA, do we want to amortize it over the five or whatever number of years we can do it? If that's the case, we need to be unanimous on that.
Correct, and I already said I'm not unanimous.
It's not unanimous. You don't want to give the COLA?
No.
Okay, so we're not going to be unanimous, all right.
So the only option then is 13, 13 million?
The only, so the other option, if, if given that, if you don't have a, if you don't have me unanimous and you had a majority, then I would challenge you to, if you're going to do that, then we should ask the, the team to say, what would that max ad valorem increase need to be to do the 13?
Well, I don't want to, I personally don't want to raise taxes, so.
Okay.
Nor do I, so.
That's, that's the only way.
So I think we've accomplished that.
There's no consensus on this.
Yes.
After getting over $20 million of new income, it just seems irresponsible.
It's unfortunate, but I, I, and I feel for the employees that have retired all those years without any COLA at all, I feel very strongly that they really do deserve it. I think we could certainly afford $2 million a year for five years, roughly whatever that number was. I, I apologize to those employees because I think it's a shame that we haven't acted on that. Obviously, we're not unanimous, so we can't do that, but I'm not supportive of a $13 million and an increase in the millage rate to do it. I, there's obviously other ways we could do it and satisfy everybody. Unfortunately, that's not going to be happening, so.
We can modify this budget. I mean, we've never had 20 million extra in one year. We've only had 10 million extra over the past couple of years, right?
Yes, but our, but our, our baseline increases.
I'm not advocating for it, I'm just saying we could.
But our, our baseline increases between insurance costs, contractual obligation increases, all the other incidental costs, there isn't enough of the discretionary modifications to support that number.
Right.
That number of 13 million is more than all of our enhancements, because there is inflation in our fleets and our, and our insurance costs. Everything is going up, so these were a smaller amount of enhancements, but they were enhancements that this team felt very important of supporting, which we think supports all of you and your initiatives and, and your constituents.
And Commissioner, I was, during the last several months, Mr. Donaldson was telling me, and probably others, that, that if we did no enhancements, we did no capital improvement projects, if we just, if we just left everything at status quo, we would have to raise taxes because if, if even if we had gotten $10 million more worth of money, it wouldn't be enough to cover our expenses. So now that we have 20, it, it allows us not to raise taxes.
And that's 20 plus the additional, the 4.6 million in utility tax and the other, you know, so, so it's actually 30 mil.
The American Rescue Plan was helpful.
Very helpful, 18 million, et cetera. So there was a lot of exciting things, additional things. A real challenge that can be in 2024, when we don't have the American Rescue Plan, and we may have a market correction, so our contributions to the different funds are going to have to increase. And then we also have a real estate market correction, which is starting to happen in a lot of neighborhoods where people don't pay cash.
All right, let's.
So, so that is, that summarizes my, my thing at this point. We have a STAN Tech presentation, and I've asked STAN Tech to stop after each fund so that we can focus on fund. There's a couple of funds that aren't as healthy as others that we need to ask some questions on, but it should move along very quickly.
Okay.
And ask your questions after each fund, but we've sort of gone over the General Fund.
Okay.
But STAN Tech is now here to do that presentation.
Okay, all right. Let's move on to business two then. Who's the representative from STAN Tech?
Here we are.
We're into the afternoon now.
Laura Reese, Director of Office of Management and Budget, and thanks to Brian for that very, very thorough presentation. He said high level, he went really weedsy, so we appreciate that he really gets in there with us and pays attention to all the details through the meeting. So thanks to Brian and the Budget Advisory Board for that. So today, I'm, one of the things we do in this meeting is, the decisions you're making in July, they don't only impact the current year budget, they impact our multiple, multiple year budgets. So we do a 10-year, we call it revenue sufficiency or long-term financial forecast every year at this time in the year, and it's really important that we do it at this time in the year, so you understand the decisions that you're making in July in terms of setting those rates and what our financial condition looks like for the next 10 years. So without reading why we do this, really, you all are setting some pretty aggressive policy goals for staff, right? You want to fund a lot of things and enhance the community. And so we want to show you how we're doing that over the next 10 years with our financial picture. STAN Tech works with us to do the 10-year forecast, and we have some interactive models where we work as a team to create scenarios. So who's involved in the process? The City Manager, department directors, deputy and assistant directors, and key staff that have knowledge about all of the operations. So, for example, for Stormwater, we're including the operations folks, the director and others to sort of set policy goals in terms of, here's where we need to get in terms of our plans and how do we get there in our financial structure. So Laura and Andy from STAN Tech have worked really closely with us this year. We spent many hours together feeding them financial data, and this, they're going to roll out to us what all the key funds look like. We do do a few funds that aren't included here, so if you have questions, we can, you know, meet with you one-on-one offline. I know we're kind of short on time this afternoon, so I'm going to turn it over to Andy to run through, and we'll be here for questions.
Thanks, Laura. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Given the discussion thus far, what I'll do is try to keep things at a higher level. We've gone through a lot of depth, particularly on the General Fund side, so I'll just call out differences and new information that maybe hasn't been talked about yet. The forecasting process relies on the most current information. A lot of the preliminary and proposed budget information that you've heard about today in great detail, that's been factored in here, as well as updated community investment or capital improvement plans, and we're working with your most recent fund balances and year-to-date information on revenues and expenses when we develop these forecasts. One item, note that you'll see throughout all the enterprise funds is we have made an assumption about some form of a future government facility for the city independently as part of the forecast, as part of the cost planning. So we haven't completely ignored the needs for some sort of a facility for the community, for the city government, so we factor that into the forecast, albeit at a reduced rate than what was previously included in last year's study when the discussion was around a joint government facility center. So going through these funds in the order listed here, I'll start first with the General Fund, and then as Brian suggested, we'll pause to see if there's any discussion or deeper dives necessary in that particular enterprise or in that particular fund first. So we talked about the fire assessment already. Going forward in the forecast, we've assumed that fire assessment has stayed flat, given the additional expenditures on the EMS side that may be offset by inflation. We think at this point it's best to show that future projections of the fire assessment revenue in this forecast are flat, consistent with current levels. We've also continued to factor in changes with the CRAs, the Community Redevelopment Areas, so Northwest Progresso, Flagler Heights, Sunsets, and Fiscal 26, so we factor that into the analysis in terms of incremental anticipated operating expenses that the General Fund would have to pick up. We've also continued to factor in annual required pension contributions, continue to build off of budgets for '22 and '23 into our forecast to include higher anticipated contributions to those pensions as required, and that's been integrated into the forecast. And as you heard Brian mention, we have included a couple of new EMS stations, both the EMS Station 88, as well as Los Olas Downtown Garage Fire Rescue. Those costs have been factored in in terms of incremental operating expenses into the forecast as well. The Government Center, taking that $10 million expense that we've identified, about $6 million of that would be allocated to the General Fund, and the rest would be distributed to the other funds, and that's been included in the forecast. Some of the biggest changes from last year to this year are actually on that revenue side. So we've talked already about the taxable value increase. If you look at the 2021, you know, with correction certificates as of May, it's actually almost a 13% increase in taxable value. Last year's study, we'd only assumed a 7% increase in value, so that's definitely a positive in contributing to a lot of the discussion about new initiatives today. We've also factored in additional future revenues from Los Olas Marina revenue, base rate revenue increases, as well as some revenue sharing that would start in the future, as well as with BHEMR, and there's substantial additional revenues per that discussion that's been included in the forecast, starting in '24, or excuse me, in Fiscal '27, and you'll see that when we get to the control panel here in a minute, in terms of the positive impacts of that revenue. We have factored in the one-time use of ARPA funds in '22 and '23, because they are one-time funds, not for recurring revenue, and they've been applied accordingly. And we also have seen in, in the forecast increased revenues from FPL for both franchise fees as well as utility taxes, largely as a result of some rate increases that they've done. So when we take stock of our financial forecast this year, it's a much different conversation, as Brian said, than in years past. When we look at that top-left chart that says end-of-year fund balance, you can see that we have a very steady fund balance trajectory. We're meeting our minimum target and really our desired top-line target for reserve balances. And that's because with the current trajectory on the taxable value that we've had, the big increase for this year, we've been able to really have a balanced budget structurally. So if you look at the cash flow surplus deficit for '23, you can see it's a balanced budget is what's been presented before you today. And as we play things forward, you can see '24 with the same millage rate is showing a very similar cash flow, break-even position or structural balance. In '25 and '26, you can see that we start to see the reserve balances increase slightly. That's based on the current capital schedule that shows about $10 million of capital expenses in those year out of the General Fund as opposed to the normal 15, 16 million average. And then as we go beyond into the forecast period, you can see those blue bars of reserves start to build up, and that's largely a result, again, of those BHEMR revenues programs coming into this forecast. The huge wildcard continues to be, you know, going forward, taxable value increases and changes, and obviously with the recent interest rate increases, that could have impacts to future property value going forward. So that's going to be one of the biggest drivers to watch in the forecast and update each year. So I hope we have a positive conversation about the General Fund next year as well, with property values coming in at or above the present 7% assumption we have included in here for next year, but I think there's a significant amount of variability on that because of some external factors right now. But I'll pause here and see if there's any discussion on this before I go to kind of a benchmarking chart, trying to, again, make sure we've got a concise summary here, given the time constraints.
There was one little chart at the bottom of this page that I just wanted to point out from Bab, which we've been looking at, and that is the growth in salaries versus property tax revenues. In 2023, we're finally going to have more of a tax increase, revenue stream increase than what our minimum obligations are. So that's why in 2023, we're able to fund these additional, these additional items. But then if you look, for example, because of the fact that we've had a flat ad valorem rate, our payroll expenses have been higher than the increase in the taxes brought in, which mean your CIP and other programs then get cut. So just to keep you, give you an idea, that, that is why we're very excited about enhancing our services this year in this current budget, because for this one year, our expenses, I mean, our revenues are outpacing our salary growth. Any question on General Fund? We can move on to the next one.
Well, I'm just looking at this, and it shows cash flow surplus in years going ahead is going to be significant surpluses. Am I reading that right?
Yes.
At 6% assumed rate?
6% assumed property value increases each year, and the big change that's causing that this year too, Mayor.
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit better?
Yes, sir. The, the big change too, contributing to that, in addition to the 6% on the taxable value increases, is also that BHEMR revenue. So that's about 15 to 20 million a year coming in, starting in Fiscal '27.
And is, wasn't there a statute recently passed by the state legislature regarding the amount of fund balance we're allowed to keep? Has that been factored into any of these calculations?
So there was a particular bill passed a couple of years ago that affects the Building Permit Fund. That may be the one that you're thinking of, Bill 447?
No, I read something recently where we're not allowed to keep as much money as we have been.
No, that's the one, 447, from a couple of years ago.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're consistent with that, with that law?
Yep, General Fund's okay, and the building fund that that law is applicable to is certainly consistent with that law, and we'll have to talk about some changes there.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, we can also, in those future years, if we're getting the 6%, we could also then start to put more money from General Fund into CIP projects like additional seawalls and bridges, et cetera. So we've only put in at this current levels, but if these revenue stream does take place and you start seeing that fund balance, then it would be wise to go ahead and get ahead of some of the CIP projections and move some of that dollars.
It also gives us a cushion in case there is any dip in.
Right, because some of these numbers could very well go below six.
Right, okay.
Of an increase. We could have a flat year, one year.
Okay.
Sorry.
Very good comments. That's why that chart at the bottom left, that taxable value increase, you know, we've shown the history on it, and it's been very positive in terms of increases, but there's, there's always those challenging periods that come up that are really difficult to predict when they occur, so Mayor having that cushion obviously is a good thing in the event that that does happen.
Thank you.
The only other item on the General Fund, I know this is a bit of an eye test for folks, particularly in the audience, it's just a millage comparison that shows the taxable rates, the tax levies, in each of the different communities within Broward County over the past 15 years. So Fort Lauderdale's the only one that's actually held the millage flat over the past 15 years, and based upon the discussion today, that would extend another year into fiscal year '23, you know, if we continued with the proposal. So next, moving to the Building Fund, this is the one, Mayor, to your point, House Bill 447 did put limits on the fund balance that we can have in this fund. We can't carry forward any amount exceeding the average operating budget for the past four years, and so this has been something we've been working towards in the financial models the last couple of years, to basically bring our fund balance in line with that. And to do so, that means we've had to have managed structural budget deficits where we're using some of our reserves to cover our operating expenses, and it's been about $5 million a year is what we've done. So we've taken that fund balance down from about $18.6 million to about $8.6 million over two years. It's about $5 million a year in terms of a cash flow deficit. We do have a separate reserve for capital expenses, but we're really focused here on the operating reserve that gives us the ability to withstand changes in revenue streams that would affect the building permits operations. And so we talked about in previous years, monitoring the fees and looking at, when is that time going to be that we have to make adjustments to the fees to make sure that we have revenues in alignment with our expenses, because we are purposely using down those reserve balances, and that time has come for, for this particular fund. So for the Building Fund, that end-of-year fund balance chart, you can see that we've been working that fund balance down over the past couple of years in particular, and that black line is the two-month minimum operations and maintenance level that we want to keep in the fund. And so we've been working down below the target maximum, which is that limitation from the state legislation. And so with this forecast, we're looking at increases in the building permits over the next couple of years, 25% next year, and then 20% in '24, to be able to bring the revenues into alignment with our current expenditure levels. With talking with the department, we're seeing pretty stable levels of building permit activities, so we really need to right-size the revenue streams and the fees to correspond with the cost for providing these services. And so this is the current plan, and then at that point forward, there may need to be some indexing adjustments to the fees to just keep pace with future inflation pressures for this fund. But even at the 25% increase in the fee levels for building permits, we're still going to have a structural deficit in '23. You can see that combined fund cash flow line were negative $3 million in '23, so we're trying to be, take a moderate approach to this to try to correct the revenue and expenditure streams over a two-year period, consistent with how we've used the fund balance down over a two-year period.
Any, any questions on Building Fund? Okay.
Moving along to the Sanitation Fund, for this particular system, there has been a plan of rate increases established that's approved through fiscal year '24 at 4% per year. We have included the sale of land to the Building Fund and certain other parameters. I think the biggest item to note for this fund are the hauler contracts. So then fiscal year '23, the current contracts, you know, will expire and we'll have to enter into negotiations around the July timeframe for new service. And based upon current market conditions, we're expecting a pretty major cost reset upwards of about a 35% increase based upon current market conditions in that cost of those contract services. We've looked at some offsets, the land sale is certainly one of those, potential bulk waste outsourcing, but that type of a increase to that hauler contract cost is something that will have a dramatic impact to the Enterprise Fund. And so based upon a 35% increase to that particular contract, and we've assumed it starts just in fiscal '24, to make it easy, it would represent an additional 15% increase that's needed on sanitation rates associated with that type of a contract reset. So that's obviously not what we're recommending today we go forward with necessarily, but this is more to help you understand that when you have that reset of that contract, depending upon what it is, it's going to have a pretty significant rate increase that would need to be passed through to customers to cover that corresponding cost of contract services. And so based on best estimates today, we're showing a 35% increase, and that would require an additional 15% increase, and then we could resume again with our indexing of plan for And then we could resume again with our indexing of plan for this fund of about 4% per year on annual rates to keep pace with that. But that's the single biggest dynamic that's looming for the sanitation fund that will have to be addressed in fiscal '23 when we have better information about what those bids look like.
Please proceed.
Yes, sir. For all the different utility funds, we will have some benchmarking available in terms of bill comparisons. So this is one for just monthly residential sanitation service. It's really important to note that there should be multiple pages of footnotes for this because the level of service, whether it's twice-a-week pickup, once-a-week, does it include bulk waste? There's a number of different nuances about how service is provided in these communities that you have to take into consideration when you look at this. So just want to point that caveat out, that when you can do a straight-up bill comparison, it's not a level-of-service comparison, and there will be big variances between communities. The next fund that we may want to spend a bit of time on is the water and sewer fund. We've continued to maintain a similar financial plan for reserves of three months of operations and maintenance expenses, a target. And we have accounted for planned continued capital investment in the infrastructure from a renewal and replacement perspective. We have been targeting $20 million a year previously for that kind of renewal and replacement spending. However, desires to enhance the level of investment in the sewer system to reduce inflow and infiltration and enhance the integrity of that system, as well as capital cost increases, that's now being escalated to about $30 million per year for that R and R spending over time for the water and sewer fund. We have supplementing that periodic planned injections of borrowing in fiscal year '23 coming up of $130 million of proceeds, and then again, five years later in fiscal '28. So we're supplementing that renewal and replacement program with some borrowing infusions to help address some of the infrastructure needs for the fund. We have factored in the advanced metering infrastructure cost, $30 million borrowing on a short-term basis that results in annual principal and interest payments of about $2.5 million. That's been factored into this forecast, as well as some contract savings anticipated from that as well in fiscal '24. And lastly, we also have factored in the recent adjustments with Oakland Park relative to that service agreement. So we do have a write-off associated with that and a near-term revenue reduction that's slowly built back up as consistent with the contract and outside-city surcharge is phased in. The biggest discussion point for the water and sewer fund is relative to the future water plant assumptions. In the prior study, those assumptions included $432 million of a capital plant that the city would bond or debt finance in fiscal '26, and that was about a $26 million principal and interest estimate at that time. And then we assume that conceptually O and M would start about three years later in fiscal year '29, and that cost would be about $16.7 million per year at that point in time for incremental O and M expenses. And so those were the assumptions that we included in last year's analysis. Currently, the plan assumptions that we have are reflective of the discussions of a potential private partnership. And so per discussions with staff, we have really updated those to reflect a few different things. Number one are some identified needs of upfront capital that may be required by the private partner in fiscal '23 and '24 as part of that arrangement. That staff can go into more detail about the nature of what those could be for. Additionally, we're assuming a structure of $60 million a year payment that begins in fiscal year '26, about 50-50 between O and M and capital. Although I will say that all of this is still a work in progress, and we're looking at ways to try to optimize the capital component to see if there's any opportunities to leverage the city's financial strength, lower credit rates to try to moderate the capital component. And as part of this analysis to date, we've assumed that any potential cost savings that we would have as a result of this partnership would be offset by potential additional charges for, say, energy surcharges or other fuel recovery mechanisms that may come into play on top of that base-level payment. So we've just kind of worked off of the high-level structure parameters of what that potential partnership might look like today. But again, all of this is still being evaluated and is going to continue to be updated at your direction as discussions continue to mature with that private partner to be factored into the analysis. But as compared to where we sat last year, this obviously represents an acceleration of the water plant expenses to have everything starting in fiscal '26 as opposed to what the prior study had assumed, which was capital initially, but then operations a few years after that. So when we look at an updated forecast for the water and sewer fund, the biggest changes that you'll note will be at the top level in terms of the rate increases to support this. For the sewer system, we had been looking at that 7% increase plan for a period of time to correct that cost-of-service disparity between water and sewer from the last utility rate study that some of you may remember. So we kind of split the 5%. It was 3.6% to water and 7% sewer to get us to the overall 5. But given that we've increased some of the future capital needs for the sewer system, notably to address inflow and infiltration, you can see that 7% would stay in '23, but in '24 through 2028, that would need to go up 1% from the 7% to 8% to cover sewer share of that additional renewal and replacement need. On the water side, as you'll recall from last year's discussion, with those then-current assumptions on the water plant, there was a 5% adder to the 3.6% for water that was, began in fiscal '23 and would run through the fiscal '28 time period, I believe. And that was to, again, start planning for the cost in that prior analysis for the water, for the RO plant. Based on the current assumptions that we have now that are a net higher cost and they're accelerated, we're looking at instead of 8.6% per year, we're looking at 11.6% starting in fiscal '24 based on the current information that we have today, which obviously is still a bit of a moving target. And then at that point, when we get to fiscal '28, we would then be able to resume back to the 5% plan, again, with the 3.6% on water and the 7% on sewer going forward. So this higher near-term plan of the next five years from '24 to '28 is really in response to the increased renewal and replacement on the system, as well as the updates and current status of the water plant assumptions.
Could you go back to the previous slide, please, for a second?
Absolutely.
So if I'm just adding this up, so if we had issued an RFP, we'd be looking at 42 million annually. So I'm adding 26 million, which is our debt, plus our annual cost, which is 16. So the prior assumption is the RFP that you're referring to, if the city built it ourselves. So we would have been spending 42 million a year. The assumptions that you're looking at based on the proposals that we received for the P3 include, let's take away the seven, because that's just for two years, 28 million annually plus 32 million annually.
So that would be 60 million.
Which is 60. So if we did it ourself, it'd be 42 million a year. If we go with the P3, it's 60 million a year, really 67 for the first two years, and then 60 million annually thereafter.
And the one point I would add to that is just that the prior information we had was from last year's study. So those cost estimates on the capital and operations cost would probably need to be brought to more current dollars where we've had a fair amount of inflation over the past year since those estimates were done, that they're likely going to be higher if they were to be updated today.
Well, I even think the P3s are going to be higher because when we received those, the inflation had not started.
I think that's a fair point, too.
So I think--
So we just need to have a--
Both of them would go up equally. The 42 would go up, the 60 would go up kind of proportionally.
It's potentially, I think we'd have to look at just the capital cost environment, what we would do in operations, and then they'd have to look at their cost structure. So I would envision there'd be some level of increase, but I just don't know if it would be the same level of increase.
Okay.
Basically, the bottom line between the two are that it, they would both be roughly the same capital because both of them have had inflationary--
Correct.
--things over the, over the next year and whenever they start. The real difference between the two proposals is the amount of O and M. So that is, and all the scenarios are 10 to 12 million dollars different a year. So that then comes into the, to the play. So the real discussion needs to be similar to what you did with the joint, you know, government center. Is, is the cost then, now that we're really projecting it through, is whether or not that additional ongoing cost of operating and maintenance? Because to build is to build. The cost of borrowing money is going to be the cost of borrowing money. So whatever that is, it's really about who's operating and maintenance. So in the P3, you're looking at 10, 12 million dollar difference between it. Is the getting online two years earlier worth that additional expense to the taxpayers for the next 10 to 30 years? Because if you're looking at this, either way, it looks like 10 years from now, everyone's water bill will be double what it is currently if we go with a P3. And that is, that's forever. So the real question is, is the difference in the, the 10, 12 million dollars more a year to give that profit to the P3 worth the coming online two years earlier? And that's more of a policy decision. But these are more the numbers. I mean, either way, the numbers are going up. I mean--
Correct.
A new water treatment plant isn't going to be free from anyone. But the capital costs, it's really about the O and M expense because that's the difference between the two different things. So that really is a significant number from our point of view, but that BAB can't weigh in on that.
But when does the comprehensive agreement come back to us when we find out the real numbers for the P3, for the water treatment?
It's being worked on now, but it'll be certainly after you get back from your summer break. I don't anticipate it being here until July 5th.
So when we get back from our summer break, we'll look at the real numbers because I think we had some projections maybe when we were given the P3. I don't think they were quite this firm at the time. I think, I don't know, I don't remember really thinking it was $20 million more a year if we went with the P3. My understanding was that it would always be cheaper, better, faster, not $20 million a year or more. So, all right. Thank you. Even though I didn't vote for it. I supported the RFP.
And just a couple of things also on the water and sewer fund relative to bill comparisons. We've ran a couple of different calculations because the bill is dependent upon the amount of water use. So we looked at a low-volume user at 3,000 gallons per month. Again, consistent with the city's overall inclining block rate structure, you can see you have a very comparable bill at low levels of usage. And then as you move to more typical uses, you're more in the middle of the pack in terms of cost comparison to other agencies. And again, this is a snapshot of where we sit today as opposed to projecting all these out for 2023. And then as you move to higher levels of usage, you'll stay at about the similar position in the survey, maybe move up a spot or two. But again, you're, you're having a presentation or a comparison of bills that I think is consistent with your objective of promoting conservation and affordability. The next fund we have is for the stormwater system. And in this particular fund, we do also have planned and programmed borrowings similar to the Water Resources Fund intended to help address fundamentally some neighborhood-level type improvements with the next coming up here in fiscal '23. And then again, a subsequent bond issue in fiscal '28 for $200 million. And then in addition to that, you know, we are looking at recurring capital investments for street-level improvements. We were previously, in last year's study, targeting about $4 million a year for those. We've started to escalate that amount gradually to $10 million a year by 2032 in anticipation of a prioritized capital schedule that'll be coming out of a master plan in the next year or two. So we're trying to make sure that we're giving adequate thought to capital reinvestment for some of the smaller projects, but then also the maintenance activities to maintain that infrastructure for the stormwater system. And so there has been additions captured both in the proposed budget that you have, but then also starting in fiscal '24 as well, associated with the additional infrastructure investment to make sure we're maintaining it as part of the plan. And so for the stormwater system, no rate increase has been identified or recommended for fiscal '23. However, starting in fiscal '24 through '28 in anticipation of that next bond issue and to ramp up our revenue stream to address the R and R needs for the system, we have identified at present a 10% increase, which would take the annual assessment up about $30 from 258, which is the current annual assessment, to $284. So that's about $30 per year for a typical homeowner. And so that's the current projection, but the timing of the exact increases is something that we'll want to come back to each year to make sure that we incorporate the actual terms of financing, as you're able to do that for the '23 financing, and update the timing of the renewal and replacement needs for the fund. So no action is being recommended on stormwater rates for this year, but we'll likely have to look at some levels of rate adjustments in '24 and beyond as we start integrating our additional infrastructure needs.
You mentioned residential in this. I had some commercial property that had problems because it went up a lot. Is there a line that talks about the commercial assessment?
Not in the forecasting model. We could add one in the, the next presentation for a typical type of commercial property or two. They're all going to be a bit different because of the trip generation component. But we've just, you know, tried to present an impact analysis for the residential customers on the forecasting models because it would be across the board. So if it's 10% increase on residential, it would be a 10% increase really for all customers.
Okay. So that was my question. So it's the same percentage increase?
Correct.
And knowing that the stormwater, which is part of your new line item, you know, we removed it, or you removed it last time to the tax bill. So that was why with this being flat in '23, we said to do the full true-up and the fire assessment because next year, then, this number on an, on an average home is going to go up to $30, not just the $10 from the fire assessment, and then up each year after that.
And then as we look at stormwater rates and do comparisons, this one is a very interesting comparison because not really our two utilities in the same spot in terms of capital investment or rate structures, or the timing of increases to support capital. So some communities still use supplemental funding sources from local option sales taxes or water management district grants. And other communities are just starting their infrastructure journey in terms of progressions, where the city's been a little bit of a leader in that regard, along with Miami Beach and a couple others. A good example is St. Pete. They just did a public presentation, and they're looking at 15% increases in their stormwater rate over the next four years, about a 60% increase in their stormwater rates. So timing is everything when you look at these charts and an understanding of some of the supplemental funding sources and the level of service that they're providing. So again, the city's very comparable and in a good position relative to the types of investment it's making. The parking fund, this system is in pretty good shape with the new pricing structure that's gone in place. Revenues are coming in consistent with budget, in fact, a little bit ahead. And so we've been able to factor in a couple new garage operations coming online, Federal Courthouse Parking Garage, La Solis Downtown. And so we've also been able to factor in renewal and replacement needs for this fund. And so for the parking fund, no rate adjustments are recommended in '23, and the outlook is as solid. We're meeting our minimum operating targets, as well as our desired target level for the fund. So the parking system with the current rate structure is performing as a sustainable business, and you can see that the net cash flow each year is very much breakeven, which is what we want to see for the enterprise fund, revenues recovering the expenses. Moving right along, just two, two more quick ones with the airport fund. One of the things that we've been paying attention to with this particular fund is just making sure we have sustainable cash flow when the transfer from the general fund expires at the end of '24, and making sure that we have a sustainable business model from that point. The lease revenues are providing a great basis of operations for the fund and some opportunities at their expiration for additional compensation and resets that are positives to the revenue projections. And the fund itself and the team has done a great job of managing their assets around the availability of grants, whether it's from the Federal Aviation Authority or DOT. And they're doing a great job of maximizing grant funding for the infrastructure. When we take a look at the financial forecast for the airport, you know, we're seeing positive cash flow. And in fiscal '25, the year after that transfer ends, you can see the airport is still sustainable, generating a breakeven or about $1 million a year on the revenues versus expenses for its infrastructure. So again, the, the airport business model is very sustainable, very well managed, and again, leveraging grants, as you can see by that CAC and funding chart, for their capital improvement program. So this particular fund's in very good health as well. And last but not least, as the regional sewer fund. So as you'll recall, this is supported by large users per agreements that are members of the central region. The volumetric rate is estimated each year as part of the budget-setting process, and then at the end of each fiscal year gets trued up based on actual expenses and flows. Just in terms of who those large users are, the city itself is the largest of the users at 80% of the flows. Oakland Park is the next largest at 14%, and then we have other users. Wilton Manors has been highlighted because that meter was actually replaced in around November of 2020, which has actually helped adjust their flows back to historical levels, which is a positive for the other large users as we now have more billing units to spread the cost over. This program, or this system as well, does have periodic bond issuances that are timed with the water and sewer fund to help support the capital needs of the system at the wastewater plant. And in addition, we do have renewal and replacement expenditures. These have grown substantially over the past few years and are determined annually as consistent with the large-user agreements. And this is just an expense to watch as it really drives the rate calculation for this particular fund. But our outlook for this fund is very much, you know, consistent with general inflationary trends for '23. We're really seeing basically a flat rate, a very small potential reduction there based on what we have right now. But you can see the idea is net cash flow is zero, where revenues coming in match the expenses going out, and each large user pays their fair share of the expenses for that regional system. the expenses for that regional system. And so over time, you can see changes depending upon the ups and downs of expenses and flows that would occur, but generally, we're within inflationary increases over the foreseeable future for the central region.
All right, great. Anyone have any questions at this time? I have one person who signed up to speak, Marilyn Maimano. Would you like to... This is you, right?
I'm speaking for our...
Okay, okay, okay. All right, okay. All right, well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Give us a little bit further time to study all these charts and graphs and hope to see you again.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to conclude, Mr. Donaldson, on business three?
Okay. I'm opening up to any further questions from Bab, but I think we presented where, you know, tried to really make sure that this joint meeting, we have another one in August.
Right.
So then we can get more into the weeds or take a look. But this preliminary does have a $2 million line item for charitable contributions. We did not get involved into that discussion this year. The only thing is, is that some of the BAB members feel that as taxpayers, that it should, we should have some type of a vetting system. A couple of the individuals remarked that they thought that it was too much of a giveaway by certain elected officials to certain groups. You know, we didn't take a point of view on it.
Okay.
As chair, I said the city
It's not for you to share that. It's not for you to have that burden.
No, no. You know what? That's not. So I don't have an official position on it. I do think, though, that when looking at the list, that for one organization to have 25% of that list is perhaps a little high, and when it, that organization is not subject to what we guided by, which was your priorities. So less than, you know, so $500,000 for an organization which doesn't fit into your priorities of homelessness, et cetera, I would much rather have that number lower as a taxpayer and put it towards some of your other home. There's other organizations that do address homelessness, et cetera. So that is just a non-BAB member feedback as an individual.
Did you sign up to speak?
No.
I didn't see your name.
We just said that the same time.
So, you know, that's a discretionary line that BAB is not weighing in on, and it's up to you as elected officials to make sure.
All right. Any further questions of Mr. Donaldson? Mr. City Manager, do you have any thoughts or questions you want to add?
No, just to wrap up, it was a good presentation. Appreciate Budget Advisory Board's participation. Again, hopefully you have enough information based upon this feedback to set the maximum millage rate and vote on the fire assessment fee on the meeting of July 5th. And then after that, we can do some more tinkering with the budget over the summer. A couple of things that were not included in the budget, I just want to highlight that we will be talking about as we come forward. There is a request, and there hopefully will be a presentation at the conference meeting in July from the DDA on participating financially in the renovation and reconstruction of Hyzinga Park. I know you all would want to know what that is before you say, yes, we want to be part of funding that or not. So stand by for that in July, as well as there has been, and I forwarded it on to Laura, who will bring it before the Budget Advisory Board, there's been an enhanced request from junior achievement based upon numbers of kids through their organization. Not to jump right into that nonprofit organization grant funding world, but we'll look at that as well.
Figure that out.
We will. And beyond that, I don't have any other comments. Thank you, and we'll bring this forward on July 5th.
A question, Chris. The DDA request, will that fit one of the buckets that you outlined in the sheet saying, you know, we can spend a certain amount on each area? Is it funded? Is it inherent?
So in the budget that's presented to you, it's not contemplated.
It's not contemplated at all?
What I will tell you, yeah, so what I will tell you when we get to that level of detail with the budget is we used a line item this year to account for inflationary costs of capital projects that we can't predict, as well as bringing in the employment contracts that haven't been yet adopted in the city to conclusion. And there's about a $2.7 million line item separated into two places in the budget. To the extent you want to participate in a project like Hyzinga Park, for example, it's a fairly straightforward reduction of that $2.7 million inflationary contract holding line item. We would just decrease that by the amount of the participation with the DDA.
Chris, aren't there taxing districts?
There are.
Yes. They just don't get a lot.
But I'm saying, I mean, they have the, I mean, I'm just looking at options, you know, they could increase their millage rate.
I think the state has to approve it.
Amongst their members.
I think they've had trouble getting the approval
Yeah.
To increase it.
Okay.
The city manager mentioned it to us as BAB, that this is something on the horizon. Our concern was, there was rumors a couple of years ago that that may not longer be a park, you know, that they were going to sell it for development, et cetera. So we asked for more information, and we said, you know, I think the city needs to make sure that if we're giving $5 or $7 million over five years or something, that there's some kind of a guarantee that that park is going to stay a park because it's not a park, you know, going back to the zoning and everything, and who owns it? So what is the city taxpayer? If we're giving $7 million to that to help rebuild that and build them a beautiful restaurant to compete with our one-stop shop, you know, what's, so we had concerns.
Okay. All right. There being no further discussion, this workshop's concluded. Thank you very much to the Budget Advisory Board and to members of the commission and members of the public, and we'll see you in a few minutes.